I've got my cheat sheet over here.
We're live.
All right, I'd like to call the Villages Marvin Regular Council Meeting to Order. It's March 9th, 2021. I show the time at 6:35 PM. And I do show we have a full form. Before we get started, I need a motion to consider allowing council members who are not here to participate remotely. We have three of them remote. So moved. All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes or removals?
We sure do.
All right, Andy's up.
All right, so the first change to the agenda would be add consent agenda item number seven. Consider adoption of personnel policy revisions. Add unfinished business number four, Greenway flooding issue update.
And that's on four?
Unfinished.
Oh, unfinished.
Business number four.
Okay, sorry. And that's what is that?
Greenway flooding issue update.
Okay.
Add new business number eight. Consider removing sanitary sewer project from the village hall request for proposals and bid project separately.
Okay.
And remove closed session. I guess table or whatever.
Yeah, well, I'll run it on the next meeting.
So, okay, so we're just gonna table that? Do that now? Table. Okay.
Yeah, and that's all I have.
All right, do I have any from the council on line there?
No, no, no.
Shaking their heads, all right? I'll need a motion, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
So moved.
All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Next up, we have pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America to the republic which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a little echo there.
Hurt me up once, boss.
All right, so first up, we have public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Not here. Can I ask if anybody on there wants to?
Is anyone online at this point want to do public comment?
Not for any of the public hearings, by the way.
Yeah, not for the public hearings, just regular public comment. I don't see anyone unclicking. So, all right, so nothing for public comment. And move right into presentations. First up, we have recognition of service for Paul Capiello.
He is, we thought it was virtually.
I see Paul, you're there. How are you?
Hello.
Good to see you. Thanks for joining us today. Glad you've been, you've been, you've been here quite a while. Fourteen years?
Yes.
Yeah, well, we truly appreciate it. I will say, I go back all the way to the days of, I think, 2013. And then, for those of you that don't know, Paul used to work in the same, with the same company in the legal department at Goodrich. So, my wife knew very much about Paul, and I mentioned that he was on our planning board. She, she couldn't have spoken more highly of you. Because obviously, I didn't know you at the time. And when she found out you were on it, so she goes, you truly have someone who's very wise at the job that he does at Goodrich. So, it basically panned over right into the village. So, we truly are gonna miss you and your ability as an attorney as well, with your background and all the input over the years that you've done for this community. So, we truly appreciate. This is a job that's, as you know, sometimes thankless and stuff. And you guys don't get a lot of accolades at times. But I can assure you, the work you guys have done, especially probably the biggest one recently for those of you listening, has been the land use plan. And again, we couldn't have appreciated more the things that you have done for us here. So, with that, you're moving on, taking a break, I should say. Maybe we'll call you back for something. Maybe you could run for office, you know? But we have this plaque here for you. It's the Villages Marvin Council and staff would like to recognize and thank Paul Capiello for his years of service on the planning board from 2007 to 2021. So, congratulating, congratulations and thank you very much. And I'll ask if anybody wants to say anything from council. If they would, they're welcome to do that at this time.
Good job, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
So, I appreciate it. And we have this here for you, and I think at some point we will.
I'll deliver it tomorrow.
He's gonna deliver it tomorrow to your home, I guess, so.
I appreciate that very much. It's been an honor to serve, it really has. We moved here in 1996. And the town was only two years old at the time. At that time, our mail would occasionally get sent over to Marvin, which is a town over in Anson County. And I called the United States Postal Service to complain. And I said, you know, why is my mail going to Marvin? And they said, well, that's because you live in Waxahaw. I said, no, 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 I live in Marvin. And he said to me, in person speaking, said, well, you go down and you take a picture of the Marvin post office and you send that to me. And when you do, then I'll start sending you your mail. So, notwithstanding, I've never sent him that picture. Over the twenty-plus years, we do, we do get our mail out here in Marvin. So, I do appreciate that as well. But it's been a great run, I would say, for all of you all on council. You know, you can look at the twenty years that this town, it is the twenty-seven years that this village has aged, and it's aged very well. I mean, you know, people will lament perhaps the loss of the farmland and so on. But, you know, development is a little bit like aging, right? You really can't stop it from happening. All you can do is influence it. And I think we all have done a very nice job of influencing the development that has happened here in Marvin. And I wish you guys the best and wish you the best in continuing what you've done so far. And thanks a lot.
Appreciate it, again.
Thank you, Paul, for all your years of service. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for that, that background and stuff. I didn't realize. All I know is that I think on all our deeds, it still says today, and check it, it still says Waxahaw on your deeds instead of Marvin. So, I was told I was supposed to go get that changed, so. But that's good. I don't think we'll ever have a post office, which is, I'm okay with, by the way.
Thanks again.
All right, take care. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, next up, we have reports and updates. First up, we have manager's report. Christina?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on, we have planner's reports. Update on March 2nd, Union County Planning Board Meeting.
All right, so this is a big one. Some of you might know the news and some of you might not yet, but all of you are about to find out today. So, a couple of people, about eight of them, you know, including myself, went to the planning board meeting at the county to make a statement in opposition of the Abington apartment complex that was being proposed at Newtown Road and Providence Road. I gave a statement on behalf of Villages Marvin. And the planning board eventually decided to unanimously recommend denial of that rezoning request. Since then, the applicant has actually withdrawn their application to rezone that property. So, that is the end of the story. That property is not allowed to have a rezoning application for at least one year. And we're gonna put some big publication pieces out about, you know, thanking the residents who came to the public input meetings. We had about 150 people show up to each of the two public input sessions. And although there were only about ten or so people that came in person to the planning board meeting, a lot more people were there on YouTube. And so, all of that voice did matter in the eventual withdrawal of that rezoning application.
So, I heard it was announced, I got a text yesterday, last night, from a resident. So, I guess it came out last night. And I did not know of it, so I thought I'd let it go and figure out. I said, well, that's great news if they have officially removed from that, which that's very good to hear. And I think WUMA forming the group that has the alliances of Western Union County Municipality Alliance is another group that is trying to do our best to get the word out to the community. HOAs, all that kind of stuff, working together. This is how you, to Paul's point, you kind of control the growth. It's gonna happen, but we have a lot of say in how it happens, and this is a big part of it. So, great job. And I heard you did a really nice job in your presentation. So, I got some emails about that. So, thank you for the time you took to go over there and kind of voice our concerns for Marvin, so.
Of course.
Okay? Anything else?
I just kind of left it general because also the planning board is going to be seeing the Union County Comprehensive Plan at their next meeting. So, if anyone has anything to say to the county about their comprehensive plan, next April's meeting would be the time to say to the planning board, and June would be the time to say to the county commissioners.
And our planning board meets again when?
This is the Union County.
Oh, Union County.
Would be the first Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM, so.
Okay. Is that something we can put on the?
We can.
Village?
There was a lot of good feedback, yeah. When we posted that the county was hearing, seeking public input, they got a lot of good feedback. Some of the, you know, some of the points were that they're proposing a moratorium on upzonings on highways that need improvement and and they expanded the transition zone. So, there are some good improvements on the plan based on the input of the towns and people.
Okay. And.
That's all for me.
That's all I had. Just for record, we had a really good meeting last night with a joint meeting with planning board, which we appreciate the planning board members coming together with us. So, thank you for that. Next up, we have Rose's report. Or, excuse me, do we have any questions for Rohit out there in Zoom land? All right, okay. Moving on, we go on to Rose's report. Christina?
Yeah, I just have one topic of WUMA participation in roundabout. I think y'all wanted to have some discussions about giving staff direction to solicit maybe some funding from WUMA for roundabout costs.
You're asking us to approach them?
No, I had.
And you and I talked about this on the phone, that now it's time, as you guys presented it and just kind of danced around it, now it's time to go in for the hard ask, right?
Yeah, so I think that we need to, like, pointedly ask our members of WUMA if there's any interest in helping us fund this contribution for the roundabout. Because obviously, they, all of their constituents use this road much more than we do. And so, I think, you know, nobody, there was no jumping out there and volunteering money at the last meeting, but they all seem sympathetic to our situation. So, I think that if we kind of put a little bit more teeth into it and like really ask them for some help.
And I don't have a problem with that. I just know that when I, we talked about it at our last meeting, just FYI, they came back right away. Well, I says, and I think one of the persons, the representative from Wesley Chapel, said, well, we have the same thing, where we have Marvin residents coming through ours. And I'm thinking, I'm not sure many Marvin residents are going there and coming back and, or going through, and maybe, I don't know. I don't know the traffic patterns, but I know they're typically towards Charlotte rather than towards somewhere through Wesley Chapel. It just was, it was a quick comeback from them. So, I don't know how much, but I agree with you. If we want to present something or we'll get that on the agenda to just do that hard ask, I'd be happy to ask for it and say, you know. I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Everybody's, everybody's talking about budgets right now. So, now's the time. Like, if we're gonna ask, like, everybody's working out their budget, so.
Is there anything in particular you'd like to ask for as far as an amount?
No.
I mean, we know that we got the extra 105 that we weren't planning on, so that, you know, we're trying to find those sources for that. I think that's the target, is it not?
Hundred and five.
Or 115 or whatever. That last number that they sent us, that we said, yeah, sure, but we'll see if we can seek other sources to.
Oh, the additional ask.
The additional ask. I think that's where we really want to go and try to, you know, get as much of that from our neighbors in support. You know, that target.
I mean, and I, I don't know if there's a way, I don't know if there's a way to determine. We know it's happening, because there are 16,000 residents, certainly aren't Marvin. So, they're mostly Waxahaw, so they're not part of that group, just for information. So, I think we should ask a, an official formal ask to Waxahaw for, because I would say they were probably, they're probably the biggest users of this particular area. Then I would say Weddington, maybe some Mineral Springs, and then at the end Wesley Chapel. So, Stallings, I don't think would, would participate at all. But I think unfortunately, the biggest user of that future roundabout will be Waxahaw residents, so. Or unincorporated. So, I think it's a, it's a two-step thing. You go to unincorporate Union County and at that point, you know, technically, we should be asking the HOAs that aren't part of Marvin if they'd like to pony up and reach out to them and say, you know. Because right now, essentially, they're getting representation without taxation, so that's my view, my.
I think, you know, the county commissioners, the chair and vice chair attend these meetings, I think we could kind of.
We'll, we'll put something together. Andy and I will talk for the next meeting, and we'll put something together for an ask and just maybe show the number, not ask specifics, but show the number. Jamie, you had something? Tad?
No, I was just gonna say, just add that it's all my presentation, and I think if you walk into that and say, give the background, just saying, hey, over the last five, six years, many of you noticed that there has been traffic control put in place. How was that, you know, that traffic control just didn't happen? It wasn't a Union County thing. We, we, we had the burden of that cost. And now, at this point in time, dealing with the roundabout and just kind of go to the district, it's all about how you package it. I know you two can do a great job of doing that, but I would just say it's all about packaging. And, you know, you start to look at the percentage too, so we start to think of a number. Go to Waxahaw and say, you know what? Maybe that is a $15,000 number. You're talking about it in your budget, but when you say 15 from Waxahaw, we already ponyed up hundreds of thousands.
Yeah.
And we're not, we're not asking for this in perpetuity. We're asking for just, just some help, you know, for this one time. That is my two cents, Paul.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Christina?
That's all.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Next up, we have deputies' report. Do you have any, any questions that you guys had on the reports? Kimmy, Kimmy, Kimmy. All right, so. Any, any questions? Any comments? No? Okay. All right. Thank you for being here and appreciate, again, you guys continue work out on the streets as well as the roundabouts, so appreciate that. Next up, we have planning board chair report.
Let me just start by saying.
John Jones, sorry.
Let me start by saying, I did my best to twist Paul's arm to get him to stay on longer. He has been, he was a tremendous asset to the planning board, you know, because of his years in, in service, the history that he had, that he was able to impart. This is what we discussed way back when about this particular thing, so. And then, I always told him, you know, his ability to, well, y'all got to see what the planning board operates like, you know, several of you've seen before, but, you know, we have an awful lot of conversation, you know, about the thing. But he was able, at the end, to bring everybody's comments into a very succinct, concise, you know, text, you know, if we were writing a text. He was great at that. And he was able to wordsmith things tremendously. You know, I'm about ready to resign if he's not gonna be here.
Don't do that to John.
Don't make me have to get another plaque.
But it's tight.
Anyway, anyway, you know, I know you've got a couple of things on your agenda tonight that we passed on to you. You know, and I'll answer any questions when you get to that, if you have any time. You know, one of them is a text amendment or an ordinance. I think that you, you know, I'm sort of talking about that last night. I think you'll be seeing more of those kind of things from us, hopefully, to try to clean our ordinances up as far as our aspect of it. Because, you know, I think there's some, there's a bit of mess in some of them.
Sure.
And hopefully, we'll clean those things up. Which that was what this one tonight, that you know, you know, review, was just cleaning up something that doesn't quite make a whole lot of mathematical sense.
Right.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, John. All right, moving on, we'll go to the PRG, PRG Chair Report. John Bearisich, I'll put him on. Kim, do you, are you the liaison for that? Do you have any updates?
Um, no, not really. We talked about some March stuff. I know we've got our joint meeting coming up in a week and a half, or, no, two weeks from today. Yeah, two weeks from today. So, we'll, they've got some good stuff to talk to us about, but not impressing.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to that in, within the next two weeks. All right, moving on, we got consent agenda. I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. So moved. Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have a public hearing. First item is open the public hearing for a conditional use permit application number 21-12576. Addresses 1,000 Spyglass Lane, pool in the side yard. First, we need a motion to open the public hearing. So moved. All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Does anyone sign up to speak?
Not here, but you probably, you might have someone online.
Okay. Does anyone want to?
I'm sorry, yeah? I missed that. We're, I'm here for Spyglass.
Okay. Okay, so, well, he's, we're doing public comments first, but he's the actual representative.
It's still the public hearing.
Okay.
We just kind of call it public comments, but all of it's a public hearing.
Okay, so he needs to be sworn in?
Along with Rohit.
Yeah. With Rohit, okay.
Pass the man one at a time or both at the same time?
We can go both at the same time.
All right, we're gonna have you swear, just because of the situation with Zoom, we'll have this online, if you will. And we have our planner. We're gonna do it simultaneously, if that's okay with you. And I'm sorry, your first name was?
Anson, Mike the County.
Anson, okay. All right, Anson and Rohit, we'll have the clerks swear you guys in.
Okay. I'll be screen sharing this stuff in a second.
What is?
Okay.
Great.
Left hand on the, right hand up. There you go.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and hope you God?
I swear.
I swear.
All right. Thank you. So, we're. Okay, so we're gonna have Rohit. See, I thought, we, okay, we go into discussion after it presents. So, Rohit, go ahead and do the presentation.
All right. So, this pool is being located at 1,000 Spyglass Lane. It's in the Firethorn subdivision and is at the corner of Firethorn Club and Spyglass Lane. The situation is that since the house is rotated in a way, that the back of the house is adjacent to the side yard neighbor, this requires a conditional use permit as a pool in the side yard. The drawing here is the most recent drawing. It was requested by the council that the applicant should send clearer drawings and visual renderings of the landscaping and the, and the survey. So, I have some of those drawings. Let's see if I can pull some up. Okay.
I don't need copies of these, Rohit.
Yeah, I just got them earlier today, so I'll get, I'll get you all those copies. But first of all, let's, let's look at the, the situation on the street. There is already an aluminum fence and some bushes that are there to screen the backyard from the street. This is the view from Firethorn Club. And now, I will pull up the landscape plan for the pool. They first submitted this one where Firethorn, Firethorn Club Drive is here and Spyglass Lane is here. That's terrible. Um, but then, I requested that that little gap in screening be closed, so then they submitted these two drawings to show that they will also plant additional trees in the area that was not closed in the first aerial. So, with that, I'll also explain the setbacks, as we can see in the survey. So, the setback from the side yard is gonna be about 27 feet. Normally, we require a minimum setback of 20 feet if it was a rear yard pool. The distance from the pool to the Firethorn Club Drive is 72 feet, and the distance to the rear of the property is very large, 207 feet. Finally, on an aerial of the map. Oh, we go look at that, council's not there yet. Okay. On an aerial of the map, that pool would be located about here. With the screening proposed as such, with additional screening over here, and the equipment being located right there with additional screening there. Does that basically tell the picture?
Rohit? Can you, can you show it from the Spyglass Street? Like, like, like you just shared, like a real picture?
Yeah. Can you go down and, a road picture from Spyglass coming? There you go. Okay. So, that existing fence right there, okay, that's staying, and then are, there'll be a building that, I guess it's kind of like a pool house, if you will, will be blocking some of that?
Right, it's really more of a pergola with a fireplace.
Okay.
But, you know, the fireplace will obstruct view, so.
Right.
Rohit, can you go back to the street view and go to the right some, sorry?
Sure. You want me to travel down the street this way?
Towards, no, no, the other way.
No.
Yeah, the other way. Yeah, that way. A little bit more. Now turn and look. Okay. So, are we, is there gonna be screening there where there's nothing right now?
I.
It looks like they're.
Are you talking to me?
Right, they're proposing to plant a whole.
I'm trying to see whoever wants to answer my question.
Okay, yes, we are planting that.
Okay, and what, what's gonna go there? What type, what type of screening?
It's the same, it's, it's the same hedge that's existing there now. I, I don't know the name of it, those truce. What's it called? Oh, they're holly, they're holly trees.
Okay, so they're evergreen type? Okay, so they're evergreen type family that stay green, don't check, correct?
Yes, they stay, oh, yeah.
Okay.
You know, that hedge, I mean, that hedge is growing in every single year. I mean, our intention is to have as, certainly as much privacy as we can.
Right.
Uh, you know, so they're, they're getting bigger and bigger.
Yeah. And, and just so you know, the only reason they're before us is because, you know, we usually don't deal with this, but because it's a unique lot, uh, I was curious how that house was gonna be placed when they did build there and, you know, on the angle that it was, that, you know, your backyard is really a side yard and it's just all, so we have an ordinance in here that, you know, we have to review all this. So I think the first plan that you sent us, we had to send it back because we really wanna see what it looks like from a, as I'm driving down, and I'm your neighbor right up the street, by the way, and as I'm driving down, I, you know, you can see all that kind of stuff. And I think you're gonna want the privacy as much as people being able to see, you know, into that. And that's why we're a little bit particular on that, so.
No, no problem at all, I understand completely.
Okay. So there's, so you added two more things, one, well, that was, that looks like this. So the plan on the right that I'm looking on screen, Rohit, that's what the final plan is, less the, um, small area to the left of the corner, that right there.
Right, this area, they submitted an even more updated plan that they will, they will put the, the screening, the equipment here, and then have additional screening here, and then I'm gonna have to undo that, pull this up. Right, right, so they put the screening here, but they have an additional, additional bushes. That would face Firethorn Club.
Just out of curiosity, how high are those tend to grow? Hollies can go pretty high, can they, no?
Depending on.
Yeah, we, we, our, our intention is to get them as high as we can. Uh, once really wants that hedge to look the whole way, so.
Nelyar Stevens can get 25, 30 feet, just depends on the species of holly that they put in.
All right, anything else, Rohit?
Um, yes, the applicant got a written testimony of support from the adjacent neighbor on, at 1,000 Force Spyglass.
Okay, so the one right behind them technically, that's on their side yard?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Okay. That, that person right there?
That neighbor.
Okay, good. Anything else?
No, other than that, um, no. Uh, with the, with the excessive amount of landscaping and the greater than minimum distances, I would recommend approval as, uh, the most recent plan suggests with this landscaping plus this additional landscaping.
And, and I was concerned too, coming down from Firethorn, what was there, what you'd be able to see. I, I didn't realize that the, the house, I mean, the pool is gonna be right behind. I thought it was gonna be on the side yard, so my concern was the existing fence and if you go on a, a street look from Firethorn, yep, right there. Um, I thought the pool was gonna be right behind that, right there, and that looked a little bit open. And we were just curious about what the, the view was gonna look like from that and stuff, so. But I think that's, uh, it looks pretty good from what I'm, I'm seeing here, so. Any questions from council?
I'm good, and I just wanna say that, uh, the plan that you're doing, the, the way you're laying it out and all, looks really, really nice, so, good job.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, any other comments from either Anson or is it Jennifer, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what's coming up on your screen, so I just wanna make sure we got the names right. Rohit, you have any other comments?
I have nothing else.
Okay. You guys? Any comments, any more comments?
That looks good.
Okay, well, we're gonna close this public comment and then we'll go into discussion and consideration for that. So I'm just giving them the opportunity to, anything else they wanted to, um, add or anything else, so. Okay? All right, with that, I'll need a motion to close the public comments. So moved.
So moved.
All's in favor? Aye.
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 Mo, mo, motion passes. Uh, next up, for that, we have the discussion consideration. Does, uh, any comments from council?
No, I'm, I'm good with the additional pictures and the additional screening that's, that's shown.
Okay. So, Andy, do you want to, does he have to read the whole finding of facts?
Yes, he does, because I'm not there to give it.
Okay.
And, and there's one more thing, Mayor, this is truly a remote meeting.
Okay.
Under our strange, uh, emergency meeting halls, the public hearing's supposed to be kept open for 24 hours. But what we've done in the past is put the final motion, say this decision is contingent upon no public comments contrary to the decision within 24 hours.
Okay.
And I can help when we get there, but I did wanna note that, because we really do have primarily a remote.
Okay, and that's only because we're doing the remote and now we've had that. So in case there's, after we, if we approve this, in case something comes up within 24 hours, uh, everything will be contingent on that, so.
Yeah, then you'd have to come back and ratify it, uh, get your decision, or listen to the public comments. And they're trying to change that state law to where the comments come in 24 hours before.
Okay.
Which is a wonderful idea.
Yeah, so you can actually get something done and?
But it hasn't gone through yet.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, a lot of local units, lawyers, they're trying to get that first through.
Okay. So, Andy, do you wanna read this and then you can read it all together?
I'm not sure where.
Finding of facts, I think?
Where is it? You don't need to read five.
I don't need to read five, just one through four?
Yeah.
And then we'll just, you wanna read each one and then we?
I think you can back together one on this one.
Okay, so what we're gonna do for council, he's gonna read all the finding of facts. And if you agree that, uh, what he's reading and to all of them, if you have one that you don't agree, it will not pass. So just make sure you're listening carefully and then we'll do all five together or six?
Four.
Four, four, we don't need to do five, because it's nothing.
Okay, all four, plus?
And, yeah, and then after the four, we'll just?
So there is a fifth, okay.
Well, that would be, that would be the passing contingent of five.
So go ahead, the first four.
In consideration of the request for a conditional use permit, the village council will need to make the following findings. Number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to plan. Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use of the public necessity. Number four, the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan, as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is look, to be located and will be in general conformity with this chapter and the village land use plan.
All right, and your motion is to make a finding in the affirmative on all four of those?
Okay.
No, I mean, is, is that your motion?
Yes.
So motion's on the table to find that, all those items in the affirmative? Further, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 We have a unanimous vote on that, and then we have one more item.
It'd just be to, to approve the conditional permit subject to, uh, no, no public comments contrary to the decision within 24 hours.
Okay.
You can say so moved, if you wanna adopt that.
So moved.
All right, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously, we'll look, congratulations on your poll, we look forward to the opening day.
Thank you very much, and I just, uh, thank you to the council for, uh, someone mentioned it's a thankless job. I'm curious, it's some tough days, but I really appreciate you guys, what you do, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Anson.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Good luck on everything, hope the weather stays dry for you, so you can get moving. Take care.
You got it.
Bye-bye. All right, next up, we have, uh, um, uh, number two is open the public hearing for zoning text amendment number 21-12592. Revis the definition of rural subdivision in 150.015 definitions. Rohit, uh, we need a motion to open the public comments.
So moved.
All's in favor? Aye.
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 Motion passes. Rohit, you're the one up on this?
Uh, yes, uh, what I need to be explaining again?
Yes.
This one, no, this one's legislative. This one's normal.
You're right. I know, it's ridiculous.
I know, these strange rules.
Right, um, okay, so then I'll just jump right into it. So in, uh, the past month, we've received a, a request that, uh, from, uh, Land Design and, uh, and their, uh, client, that a 19-acre parcel should qualify as a rural subdivision, because they're putting six lots on 19 acres. However, the definition of rural subdivision also includes that parent tract must be at least 25 acres. So originally, the, um, applicant has submitted a zoning text amendment that says that they would like the line that says that must be at least 25 acres stricken. The planning board has then, um, seen it and recommended that they put a minimum of 12 acres. And also, and even though the, the proposal for the subdivision has not been submitted yet, so that should not be talked about really as much. But the proposal is to have six lots all fronting the existing thoroughfares. Um, but even then, the planning board wanted to use this opportunity to make sure, just kind of a, as a stopgap measure, that they don't wanna see, uh, rural subdivisions being gated, because they said, currently, no subdivisions are being gated. Um, although there's an exception for rural subdivisions in another ordinance. So for now, to add the clause that says which must be platted for public dedication, so that, um, public roads can't be gated, and then we will, um, kind of, kind of surgically remove the, the section that, uh, allows gates for rural subdivisions at some other point. In any case, um, this right here is what the planning board recommended, uh, based on, uh, the original application that was received. That is just, that was just to strike the line that, uh, line B that says, um, to just remove the minimum size. That is where we are right now. The applicant, Rob Klout, is here. Uh, sorry if I said your name wrong, uh, representing Land Design, um, and, uh.
Rohit, correct me if I'm wrong, when we discussed this, didn't we, as a council, decide that we wanted to go down to 10 acres versus 12?
Right, that was, that was a discussion that happened during the call for public hearing item at the work session. Um, so thanks for bringing that up, I was going to also, if you didn't.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm remembering correctly.
That, yeah, that happened when we were calling for a public hearing, uh, well, that kind of discussion, um, should just be officially stated at the public hearing, so.
So, so, so what's, what's, uh, what's 10, why 10? I mean, why not?
12, 12.
We had eight before, right?
Um.
Well, no, the, what was the eight one?
Um, hold on, eight is the number of lots that are rural subdivision.
Oh, okay, I'm getting it.
I think you're getting your numbers mixed up.
Okay.
But 12 was picked because that's the approximate size of five lots. Um, you guys wanted to reduce it to 10, because that's the approximate size of four lots.
Because it's that jump between the, the minimum, minimal subdivision to the median one of eight, which is rural. Then, then it goes up to the.
Major.
Major, which.
Which is anything else.
So if we went 10, that, that's a true transition from four to the rural. When you look at the, the number of, of lots within the acreage.
John, I'm gonna allow John to speak, John's here still, go ahead, John.
Well, the reason we came up with 12 was just doing the math. It says no more than eight lots, and half of them have to be larger than two and, or two and a half acres. And then the others will be, you know, two acres. And we did the math and it came up to 12 acres. That's how we came up with 12.
Okay.
We were just trying to bridge that gap between a minimal and the next, you know, gradual step.
That was our, you know, why did we?
And the minimal was?
We did the math.
Four lots. It's a maximum of four lots, and what's the acre jump?
That's a max of eight, eight lots.
No, no, he, the minimal.
Oh.
Maximum of four lots, right.
Minimum of, okay.
Right, the minor subdivision is the maximum of four lots.
Okay, that's a minor subdivision.
Is up to eight, but then to have that transition, to have a five-lot or four-lot rural subdivision is the difference between allowing that.
So how does that affect what they did across the street here? Cause they had, that's considered a rural, is that connected?
That was the first rural subdivision, and, um, to go back to the discussion, that was why the, they, they were the ones who initiated the rural subdivision being added to our ordinance. And so they, they got it written, they, they, you know, contacted the planning department at the time and, and got a rural subdivision added to our ordinance and then built their subdivision based on that ordinance. That's what this is.
Okay.
That's how they ended up with their gate.
Right, because they, they also added.
I thought they had a gate there before, though.
No, there was nothing.
Okay, so they added the gate, so we allowed a gate in that.
Right.
Those cases only because why?
Because in the, in a, in, in the sign section, and this is, we talked, I talked about this with our attorney, but in the sign section, it allows for rural subdivisions to have gates. It's really contradictory to the streets and roads section, which says no roads shall be gated, um, but, uh, some.
And, and there's some no private rights.
Right, and it also, yeah, there's two points of con, confliction and, you know, if you wanna.
They had this whole discussion, violence broken, the whole thing, if you recall.
Right.
If, if we're gonna get that cleaned up, we've actually drafted some language, but it does look like unless, and this council can change its plan, there were a lot more provisions allowing a gate, because they were extensive. There were about four pages on all the requirements, and a lot of them are, it was actually really good thinking, uh, having the box for the fire department, coordinating with the sheriff's department to make sure you have access, making sure the roads were private. So it, it clearly appeared to me that council intended to allow these gates, but they, uh, they just didn't clean up the other area. But it is in limited circumstances and is heavily regulated, but we should still get, get this cleaned up, so there's not an inconsistency.
Right, so in the meantime, as a, you know, stopgap measure to that inconsistency, the planning board recommended to add that if rural subdivisions have a road, they must be platted publicly, so that, um, that eliminates the, um, the conflict and just makes it so that even rural subdivisions can't have gates.
So this, we go forward with this, just to be clear, this development that they're looking at on the 17 acres, I think it is, correct?
19, 19 acres, okay.
So they could potentially have gates?
They, well, because they don't have a, they don't have a central road.
I'm just saying, can they have gates?
Um, if you don't, if you don't add this part, then they could build a road and they could put a gate, because there's precedent for a rural subdivision to have a gate.
Okay, here's my concern, and it's a concern right here too, quite frankly, is that I've already been on, and we talked about this, I think, we've been on roads and I can get the address for you, where you have, there's not even room. They installed gates right on Marvin School Road. And once one person stops there, it creates a backlog of people on that road, and then you got a bad sight line of people coming the other way. And I, I almost witnessed head-on, so just, I guess we gotta be cautious of, if we're gonna allow gates on these roads and, and people have, this backing up Marvin School Road or any of those issues is my concern, if you allow on Marvin School Road, gates in the front there.
We're gonna talk about gates at the next meeting, aren't we?
Yeah, gates, I mean, gates on individual properties is a, is a different topic altogether.
And council had requested to talk about, um, gates in general, so we've got that slated for the next meeting.
Right, but this is part of the subdivision, and it's in that subdivision, is, are we, isn't that included? Do they allow gates or don't they allow?
They could allow gates on.
I know we don't have gates, even in Firethorn, we don't allow gates in front of individual properties, because there's public roads. So you got public roads and with this, and I know they're not part of an HOA or anything, but I'm just asking, because I, I just, I'm concerned going down, looking forward at what potential issues that could cause if they could, if people couldn't, a delivery truck, for instance, can't pull right through.
Okay, so, hold on, so, but this, this, this is to change the text amendment to keep what is a rural subdivision, correct?
Okay, right.
This is nothing.
Okay.
Once, once we get to the approval for this neighborhood, then we can talk about the gates for that.
Yes, thank you.
I don't wanna talk about gates tonight. But I am concerned about this E, no more than one new road is created, which must be plotted for public dedication. I feel like that is so contradictory to what we literally did across the street, and we allowed them to have a private road, and now we're saying, oh, they can have it, but you can't.
Well, right, it was allowed at the time, and the planning board thought it shouldn't have been. Well, right, it was allowed at the time and the planning board thought it shouldn't have been allowed then and it shouldn't be allowed in the future. So throw this in just to make sure that future rural subdivisions don't get gates until perhaps council comes up with a, a resolution to this conflict in our ordinance.
I wouldn't even do that. I would take out the red part and then if we decide we don't want gates, then we go back in and add it. And, and instead, we're like doing it now and then we're like, oh, well, if we decide to allow, I mean, it's like one way, you know, half a dozen the other. And instead of like doing it like that, we've already allowed private roads. And if people wanted to maintain and take care of their roads, I don't care. It is one less road or five less roads or twenty less roads than we have to take care of. So I, 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 I'm fully like, if, if, if people wanna take over and maintain and make their roads private, that settles out. But I don't know that we need to, we've already allowed it. I don't know that we need to not allow it in the future if you're doing a rural subdivision. I think we need to figure out the other stuff. And I know we're doing that at a later date.
Well, in the, in the interim, the one subdivision that's being proposed in this category doesn't have a central road, so we don't have to even worry about it right, right at this moment, anyway. So I agree with Ken, I think we can just, we can deal with this at another time. I don't think we need to put it in the text amendment right now because we have an opportunity to clean things up elsewhere. We're not pressured.
Okay, so remove that planning board recommendation and change this, what was it? Well, here, here I, yeah, you could change that to ten instead of deleting the line altogether. Um did a little calculation here, four lots would be nine acres, but of course, um, you know, you could have some view sheds and some roads. Um anyhow, ten acres there instead of deleting the line. And if that's the final consensus, then is, uh, is there an interest in making a, a motion to adopt or to approve the zoning text amendment as, uh as amended?
Highlight it.
Yeah, and, and we need that condition.
Like that, like you have it right now, we basically just change it to twenty-five to ten.
Okay, would you like to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning text amendment number two-one dash one-two-five-nine-two, revise the definition of rural subdivision in one fifty point zero-one-five definitions with the modification presented tonight.
And would you allow it to be added condition upon no public comments contrary to the decision uh received within twenty-four hours? That's that public hearing rule.
What he said.
Thank you.
You know what he said.
All right. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion.
Yes.
Good, motion passes and then
Now we need the reasonableness and consistency statement. And unless y'all disagree, I can provide one. We don't have many text amendments, but this is another one we're supposed to find that is reasonable and consistent. And here you can make a finding that village council finds that the action to amend the zoning code consistent with the adopted twenty-twenty land use plan and reasonable and in the public interest because it will allow more flexibility with the development of large residential lots.
So move. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Um just for the record, Chaplin is earning his
Yes.
He's on it tonight, buddy. He's up for the record. Earnin' his fees.
I can put that in quotes if you want.
I'll think of it then. All right.
Hey, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, if you said it earlier, I apologize, I missed it. But did you, um, happen to say we have a hard stop at any time?
Yeah, nine o'clock.
Okay, I missed
I, no, I didn't say it, but, you know, now that you say it, I am looking at the time and I'm hoping we can still be on for nine.
Just checking, thank you.
Thank you for reminding me and keeping me on task here, so.
Was there ever a motion to close the
Um, well, yeah, we did
No, we did not close the
You know what, we didn't close the public comment.
I wanna do that.
Before we go into, then we should, we have to do that again then, right? Cause we never closed the public comment. We did not. Cause we just went right into discussion and consideration on that. So just for the record, I need a motion to, to close the public comment period?
So move.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion passes and now, now we need the motion to, since we went through discussion and consideration already, the
I, I think we can let it go. I mean, we just, the public hearing was still going on, somebody could've commented while y'all were deliberating, but they didn't.
Okay.
So I think we can let it go, yeah.
The man says we can let it go. I'm gonna go with the, uh, advice of the attorney here, so. Um so it looks like that's been approved then. Um apologize for that and, and, um, missing that. Um so moving forward, we have Village Hall is next up on the discussion.
So real quick, I'm just gonna go through a couple of things because with the meat of what Village Hall is gonna encompass is in new business. Um basically, there's some responses to an email in your agenda packets that you had asked questions about at the last meeting about the number of condensers. There is a total of six and they are in the rear or in the parking lot area of the building. Four on one side, two on the other. Um we are waiting for an updated set of plans, which we will have by the final approval date. Um he does not recommend we reduce the tonnage at this current time. And if council is willing to look at the generator size, we can do that after the bids are submitted in the post-bid negotiations.
So did they say why there were six units to meet that tonnage?
All he said is the mechanical creates that
I just, yeah, I, I'm just still very
For five thousand square foot?
Yeah, that just does not, I mean, the, the, you know, there are those of us that have five thousand square foot and, and I've worked around houses with twenty thousand square foot. And he has four units on a twenty thousand square foot residence. So I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around why we need six condenser units for a five thousand square foot building. That's, that's all. I, I think that they could be condensed down and get more tonnage out of, you know, less number of units without being such a cumbersome
Is it because it might be a commercial build versus a
I can't believe that that would make any difference, really, unless there's redundancy, which he's not, which has not been told to us.
The, I mean, I can read you what he, he responded, and it says, due to the size, orientation and you, and different uses of the space, mechanical create, creates zones for those conditions. Other than designing a central system, the design provides sustainability, sustainability. If one unit goes down, it doesn't take out the entire building. I would not recommend reducing tonnage.
It's redundancy is what it is. It's, it's zone, there's six different heating and air conditioning zones in there and each one of them has a condenser unit. So if one of them dies, the other five are still running and it keeps the building
Relatively cool, but one area of the building may go down.
Right.
Is that correct?
But it's enough to keep the, it's enough to, to, to keep that part that's down
Or heated, whatever.
Cooler or warmer.
So we can still negotiate that if we come back to the bids and they're extremely high, we can do that in our post
That just takes up six, to his point, six condensers takes up a lot of space in, in area that, you know, we're trying to hide these things in this sense. And, and so there's four on one side, two on the other.
Correct.
Okay, and that's on the parking lot, correct?
Correct.
So I mean, we, like you said, we can go, we can get into the weeds with this as we get to that point with the contractor
Yeah.
Figure out if there are any other options, but for right now, this is what it is.
Yep.
Gotcha.
And just a quick update on the timeline, we will have the RFPs back on the twenty-third, so just in a couple of weeks. Y'all will look at the final design approval after DRB does so, which is supposed to happen next week. Um so y'all will consider the final design on three-twenty-five and we will submit permits after DRB approves. So we're assuming that everyone's okay with everything that they've seen, there's no major issues. Um we are expected to get LGC approval on April sixth and our loan closing, closing will be on May thirteenth. Any questions? That's all that happened.
Hearing no questions. Christina, moving on, uh, we have unfinished business. Uh first up, we have discuss and consider applicants for appointment to the planning board for a term expiring three-one, twenty-twenty-four. Austin?
So same applicants as we talked about the last meeting. I hope you've had a chance to reach out to them. They're both, I think they're both very qualified and I'm sure whichever, whoever you decide to point would be a good fit for the planning board.
And this is replacing, uh
Paul.
Paul.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um I'll take it out to council. Do you have any comments or does anyone wanna make a nomination for this position? Crickets. All right.
Go, go forth and make the nomination.
I'm sorry?
You're asking, should we have the nomination? I, I'd say yes, we can.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm asking if, uh
Okay. You guys, you guys are killing me tonight. I wanna get out of here. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to create Prague Hotel to the planning board for turbot expiring one-three-twenty-four.
All right, any other nominations? All right, hearing none, uh, we'll take a vote on Parag. Uh, motion is to appoint him to the position, uh, expiring, for planning board, expiring three-one, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounds like the motion passes unanimously. I think, Austin, you can inform him, hi, when the next meeting is, yes?
Austin, whenever you, um, talk to him, um, cause I know he's on the, uh, Board of Adjustment, ask him if he wants to be on both. And if he doesn't, if he wants to resign, then we can always expect with Board to see if he might get the position. I just don't know, is, we keep on reading anybody, I don't know if, um, you know, Prague wants to be on both.
I'll ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Bye, y'all.
Say it, John. Thanks, man. All right, moving on, uh, we have next up, uh, discussion of Marvin Day preparations.
I'll take this, Austin, just real quick.
All right.
Um so there was a lot of discussions at the last meeting about maybe forming this as a subcommittee and after we've done some research, um, we are fine delegating it to the PRG board if council so di- so desires to do so.
I'm good with it. Everyone okay with that, delegating that to PRG? And here's what I do, cause they're gonna come before us anyways when they get that. So I would encourage, Jamie, you have a lot of great ideas, to reach out to them and basically give them your ideas and then they can kick that around, they'll bring it back to all of us so we don't have to hash this out and spend any time on it. That's what I'd like to see. But I'd encourage all council to, uh, look at that. What's she doing over there?
She's getting all techie on us.
Yeah, high tech on us, you know? All right, so, um, we don't need a motion for that, or do we?
Nope, that's the consensus.
All right, if that's all we need on that, then, uh, can we do some emojis to them?
We, we can.
Anyway
Picture emoji, Joe.
Yeah.
What's emoji?
Well, there you go. Yeah, we'll celebrate. Celebrate if I get out of here at nine o'clock, how about that?
All right, well, keep it moving then, so we can get to nine.
So we'll, we'll move forward to that and we'll look forward to hearing from them on Marvin Day. Next up, we have discussion and consideration of options for Village Hall site drainage.
So this kinda coincides with new business number eight. But basically, in short, on this item, we have had continuous discussions with DOT about resolving some drainage issues that are coming from a cross pipe that goes over Newtown Road that have, um, yet to be resolved. And it does not look like DOT is willing to do the work and/or grant us permission to do the work. So therefore, we are moving on with other options, um, which include creating some, um, drop inlets into our Village Hall project, which we're revising the plans right now to, to do so. Um, not a huge deal, but we'll talk about that more in detail with new business number eight.
And do we have any recourse with DOT on this?
No, because their stance is that we would be reverting, uh, or diverting the natural flow of water, so.
That's their stance, that's what I'm saying.
Well
They've had hydraulics.
The basic deal is, is if we were to put this down that ditch that we wanted to, they screwed up on their engineering and didn't put a big enough culvert in to retain this water, which should've been put in to begin with, and that ditch cannot take any more water.
Down, down the road, yeah, down the road, the, the catch basin is not big enough to maintain that capacity of flood.
So we have to have a whole new plan, which we'll get into that on number eight.
There's some stuff that we can discuss about that, that really does put it all back on DOT way back. But there's a lot of discussion and it would have to be a lot of, a lot of digging to get, get it all the way back to that. So it's, it's a, it's an uphill fight. Let's just put that there.
All right, anything else on that, Christina?
That's it.
All right, moving forward, and new item, uh, number four, we added Greenway flood issue update.
And I'm gonna let, um, Katsman Wortman kinda take this over. We've had a lot of discussion over the last three weeks. Katsman Reline and, um, Katsman Wortman have gone out and done some drainage and I appreciate all their efforts and I'm just gonna kinda turn it over to you.
We get your four-minute song and dance on that.
Well, so basically, we all know that, uh, what I've been referring to affectionately is Lake Marvin over there on our Greenway. Um, we've had a major flooding issue over there due to the tremendous amount of rain we've gotten this winter. Um, after taking some elevation shots over there with a laser, um, I came to the conclusion that, um, there is some fall into DOT's ditch to drain it. Um, there are several options that I have later discovered along those lines. But basically, what I found was the whole reason why we have so much water over there is once again, DOT and their ditching practices have failed us. There is a high spot in their ditch, which backs water up in the ditch to a level that surpasses the ditch bank. There's a low spot, um, near the telephone pole and, uh, other, um, appliance things there at the base. And the water runs over that and down, down into our area. Um, it's not really all that deep, it's just a low spot in the ground. But because the ditch isn't graded correctly, it backs up into there. Um, my recommendation for remedy would be to burn that about eight inches higher than what it is right now, which would retain any of that water backing up. And there is actually a ditch that was created down on the Marvin Creek side that is in the, um, weeds, so to speak. A bunch of briars, a bunch of overgrowth. And after further investigation, after they pumped a bunch of the water off, um, that ditch has been obstructed by fill-ins and what have you and it is no longer operational, um, for most of it. Um, I feel like that if we were to put a cross pipe across our trail to get the water from the Marvin Creek side back over to the roadside, that would drain most of that, uh, area over there. And if we were to clean out that ditch and make it operational, should be able to drain ninety-five percent of the site. Um, excessive amounts of rain, because it's so flat and Marvin Creek is high, there could possibly be some ponding back in there. But I, um, am positive that we will not be flooding our trail, which is the main objective.
And no work will have to be done on the trail at all, or do we need to raise that up a little?
No, we don't have to raise the trail from what I'm seeing. Um, the original, um, direction was from the engineer to raise the trail up and spend around eighteen to twenty thousand dollars on that project. Um, I feel that we can probably do it for a couple thousand dollars. We have dirt on Village Hall site that we could use for the burn. And, um, I think we could possibly use the Parks and Rec guys to do the clearing and I would be willing to go do the ditch work. So we could do it at a pretty reasonable amount of money.
No, no offense to your expertise on this and stuff, but did we also confirm this with our engineer that what you're saying should be done or can be done?
Our, uh, well, it just so happens that we have a, an engineer on the Parks and Rec board who also looked at it and corroborated my findings.
Okay.
And he does drainage and hydronics.
But not the, the village engineer?
No, no, not the village engineer, but we, we had, uh, an engineer that did corroborate my story on this, so. on this, so.
Okay.
The only, the major thing that we need to, where the ditch is, is actually village-owned property. What we do need to do is figure out where our right-of-way is in that section where the burn needs to be. It's Union County Public Schools property, and the last conversation I had with Rohit, he couldn't find a right-of-way on that plot. It shows the plot, but doesn't show the right-of-way, and I know we have to have a right-of-way. We have a paved trail runs from one end of that property to the other, so it's got to be somewhere. I'm just not exactly sure where it is. It's not a very extensive burn. It's like an eight-inch hump of dirt in a 60 to 80-foot length. That's it. It just, it will retain the ditch water because it just, so much water comes across the road at that point that it floods. Jamie, you have anything else to add to that?
Which way is water traveling?
Water travels this way. The Six Mile Creek is north of this map.
Okay.
And so I've kind of drawn this based on these elevations that were cited by Dan, the guy on our PRG Board as engineer. So what should happen is that the water follows the yellow arrow, because that's where the DOT ditch is, and what is happening, because there's a high spot in the ditch, is that it's following the red arrow where our trail is this.
DOT's denying any fault, I'm assuming.
We haven't approached them on this yet, but, you know, but do you know how easy they are to deal with? So, you know, we're looking.
I understand that, but, you know, and hopefully we can get this fixed down, but if this starts to get into the tens of thousands of dollars, then I think this is a DOT issue.
Yeah, well, I'm not recommending raising the trail at all.
Jamie?
So, no, so I agree with Andy. I think, because this is, this is just a tiny map in DOT, so I think we take what Andy's recommending, because I've been down there, and, you know, he showed, he showed me, and we're kind of walking together. I think what he's recommended is appropriate and should be able to fix it. And then maybe it's just something we don't have, it's just one less thing we have to approach DOT about, even though we are, just on the record, we are fixing their mistake. Because if you walk that, that culvert that goes through there, and where it just kind of trickles down, that was not done at.
Okay.
So if everyone is okay with moving forward with this plan, we'll have to make sure we've got funding to do it. I'm sure it's not going to cost much, and if we don't, we'll have to come back for a budget amendment, but it would have to come from fund balance if we can't find the funding to do so.
Was there any budgeting for the recommendation from our engineer for lifting?
No.
I know Derek has some money in his budget, but, and like I said, you know, moving some dirt from one site, quarter of a mile down the road to the other, is going to be very cost-effective to build this burn. We just need, really need to get permission for the burn, and as far as cleaning out the ditch, we can use our personnel at the park to do some clearing. It's only a short amount of space that needs to be cleared where I can get in there. If we rent a machine for $200, I can go clean the ditch out, and it's done. It's a very cheap fix. So I feel like this is probably going to be the easiest, the probably, the most expensive part of it would be, we are going to have to do a little bit of asphalt work over there I discussed with Derek today that's kind of fallen off the radar. We have three trees that have butt the trail, and the roots are creating heaving on the asphalt, and it's creating a trip hazard, and those things need to get taken care of. At that point, if we decide to do that, get that asphalt repaired there, if we do a saw cut across the trail, put in a cross pipe so that the water drains across, we can get the asphalt patched at the same time, which would save money. So if we kind of coordinate those two small projects for trail maintenance, I think we can make this a pretty quick and inexpensive fix versus 20 grand to raise the trail up, to put a Band-Aid on it, which isn't going to fix the problem, it's just going to.
Right.
You know?
We can, we'll move forward, we can make it happen.
All right.
Anything else we have to do? No motions or anything?
Yeah, I mean, go ahead. Let's make a motion to make the repairs as recommended.
So give us your motion then.
So I move to make the repairs on the affected section of the Marvin Loop to burn the area that is low along DOT's ditch to prevent overflow, and to clean and clear the existing drainage ditch to allow water to drain from the site.
And is there a number that we have to go back for a thing that we have to be aware in this motion? If it's over a certain amount?
Oh, I don't, no, I mean, I don't know what the amount's going to be, but as far as.
Okay, we're just making a motion to get it done, and then we're going to come back with the cost. Okay, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. So next up, we have new business. Discuss, first up is discuss and consider approval of contract in the amount of $12,500 for fiscal year 21 audit, and direct the manager to execute the contract with S. Preston Douglas and Associates LLP to conduct the audit.
And I'll take this real fast, Jamie. This is the auditor that we've had over the last two years, I believe. I think we're under a three-year contract, so this is the last of the three unless we decide to renew it. You know, unless there's any questions, it's pretty straightforward. The attorney's reviewed the contract, he's okay with it.
All right, any questions out there in Zoom land?
Vote.
All right. I'll need a motion to, for that, to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract in the amount of $12,500 for fiscal year 21 audit, and direct the manager to execute the contract with S. Preston Douglas and Associates LLP to conduct the audit.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Next up, we have consider approval of engagement letter with Parker Poe and authorize the manager to execute a contract in the amount of $20,000 to draft documents related to the installment financing agreement for Village Hall.
So I'll take this to start off, and Jamie can jump in on the end, but basically, in a nutshell, we did hire our first try-on to hold our hand through this process, since we are doing bank bids and installment financing for this, and apparently, they have recommended some bond counsel to assist in the, again, the holding hands there. On the last page of the memo, it kind of highlights some of the fees, which were estimated at $50,000, and that's how it's broken down. Y'all seen that number in previous additions of us presenting Village Hall financing to you all, and we've never really had the numbers broken down? But this is, this is the level of detail that it breaks down at, and Parker Poe is a part of that $50,000, and that letter of engagement, and their scope of services is listed here. Jamie, I don't think you have anything additional to say.
Just one add is that these fees of $50,000 will be paid at closing, so it's going to come out of your monthly pay on those fees.
Okay, so there's no additional.
So there's nothing coming out of your operating budget, it's going to come out of the monthly.
Which is, I think was originally discussed, so, okay. Any questions from council? Okay, that being said, we'll need a motion to, I'll just go ahead and say, direct the manager to execute contract with S. Preston Douglas and Associates. Oh, I'm sorry, to consider, I'm reading the wrong one. Consider approval engagement letter with Parker Poe and authorize the manager to execute contract in the amount of $20,000 to draft documents related to installment financing agreement for Village Hall. So moves. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. Moving on. Thank you, Jamie. Moving on, discussing, consider approval of final plat for Marvin Gardens Residential Subdivision. Rohit?
So this is the final plat from our regards residential. It is required as a major subdivision to be seen by the planning board and the council. However, as a very tightly regulated individual conditional district, they had no changes to make from the construction plat that was approved about 11 months ago to the final plat, which is being presented today. And so I've included both of those in the packet, just so that you can see that there are no changes between the construction plat and the final plat. And so, once, if the council votes to approve the final plat today, then they would be able to start building and selling building houses and starting lots.
Yeah, the only comment on is the comment that I think Richard Helms made about who manages this age-restricted, which really it comes down to, in the end, it comes down to the HOA.
Yes, that's right.
We don't have control of that, so as much as they say, hey, yeah, we're going to do an age-restricted, that's what it's intended for. The only thing I could see coming up is if, like, if the HOA changes over years, and all of a sudden there's kids in there, are we running buses there? Or is that, you know, is that a Union County thing, or they look at that, and they said, no, we won't, we won't stop there?
Yeah, I can answer that question. It's in the zoning district that this must be an age-restricted neighborhood, so that the HOA cannot unilaterally decide that this is not an age-restricted neighborhood.
Okay, but it's age-restricted. I'm 53, and I have a nine-year-old, so.
In an age-restricted neighborhood, kids, no one allowed, under 19 is allowed to live in a neighborhood.
Not allowed at all.
Yeah, but also, that's a zoning issue. In here, we're really looking at the plat.
Right, houses.
And, I just was bringing it up because he had brought it up at our retreat, and I thought, you know, okay.
But yeah, does that answer?
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, as long as that's a.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, the plat.
So is the, any questions from council? If not, I'll need someone to make a motion to approve the final plat, given that the planning board, it sounds like they already made changes.
Make a motion to approve the final plat.
Kim, beat you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kim.
I already said moved, Joe. You already said it. It's a move.
All right, further discussion?
Sorry.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Next up, we have discussion of numbering of ordinances, resolutions slash proclamations. Austin?
I'll take it real fast. Basically, what we've been doing in the past is numbering our ordinances and resolutions before y'all consider them. It does present a little bit of a mess when things change and things happen. Typically, you don't see that local government. Typically, you see them numbered after the meeting, so we're just basically asking for y'all to allow us to change the procedure and how we do this.
The numbers are immaterial to the meaning of whatever's been considered, it's just for record-keeping purposes.
And it's, makes it easier for you.
Much easier.
It's all about, it's all about making life easy for you, brothers. All right, so we need a motion for that?
No, consensus is fine.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
This is part of the autonomy that you have as being a different form of government, right?
Everybody else going to be okay with it?
Yep, I think everyone is. We all, our consents are all thumbs up, okay.
Jamie left, so I don't know where, I don't know where his head's at. He's gone.
Jamie has left the bus, or building.
I want to excuse him.
Bad Jamie is our finest Jamie.
Yeah.
Jamie, Jamie has left the RV.
So did we know he was going to leave or not? Did he just fall off?
Five seconds ago, so he might join back.
He may not have great connectivity there.
Okay.
Yeah, this happened yesterday, too.
This is what happens when you're traveling RV. What's that?
No, I hope that's not our policy, but that's.
I think if you're not there and not excused, it's a yes vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's a yes vote.
His vote counts in the affirmative, since it didn't formally.
Yeah, so anything, since he left and we didn't approve it, his, any votes will be an affirmative vote.
Unless y'all excuse him, that is, for technical differences.
Unless you guys want to excuse him, he didn't ask for it.
Let's wait until we get to our next vote, and then we can, if we can, if we can, if we can get back on.
All right, well, he's not here to talk about council coffee anyway, but that's what we're up on. Next is discussion and consid, we'll sign him up. Discussion, consideration of 2021 coffee and council base. April through June, all right. Austin, you going to take this?
Yes, okay, so you guys like to see these every few months. This is April through June. I selected the dates that you guys would normally have these on, so at this point, it's, who wants this date? Who wants this date? Who wants April 1st?
Well, April 1st is the very first day of spring break, so I don't know that that's the best day to have it.
Give me a second here, because I know something's up on April 1st, I mean.
And it's April Fool's Day, and I would never, I would never show up for anything with the village.
We'll get you, Kim.
Austin, you want to put the dates that I chose first, so.
Bob volunteered for April.
How about you, Bob?
No, I got, I'm getting shots.
Okay.
Bob volunteered for April 27th and June 3rd, so I've got that marked down, if you're okay with that.
So Bob, are you doing those in person, or are you doing Zoom on those?
Doing Zoom shots.
Okay. It does look like I'm in town on the 27th, so I can take that.
So Bob and Joe on the 27th?
I can take the 27th.
Sorry, Bob, I think the volume was low on you when you were speaking.
Okay, so is we doing one earlier on Thursday?
Do you want to move that to a different day? I'd recommend keeping it on a Thursday.
I mean, spring break's not over until the 12th, so the first Thursday would be the 15th. Do you want to do them that close together?
You know, I don't see, I don't see a need to, given that there's spring break, I think we can pass on one of them. I mean, this isn't an ordinance and stuff. I mean, spring break is, is right in the heart of all of this, and it's different for all different fam, well, not Marvin, but, but yeah, the following week is, is all blocked off for me, so.
Do you want to do the 15th, or does it only have one next month?
Well, given it's in the morning, I think I'm okay with the 15th. Is anyone else?
I can do the 15th.
It's tax day.
Yoohoo.
Okay, you want to do the 15th? Anyone else?
Kim just said.
I know, anyone else?
Oh, well, I can do the 15th.
Okay, so we are.
My schedule is much more open now.
Bob, just so you know, I'm bringing, I'm bringing barbecue to our Tuesday night evening. These donut things and coffee aren't working. I'm bringing barbecue, maybe that'll bring someone in.
I do have to work, Austin.
Barbecue and bourbon?
In between there.
Yeah, maybe. All right, moving on to May. What do we have? May 6th?
Wait, 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 hold on. Andy and I are doing the 15th. Who's doing the 27th?
Bob and Joe.
Yeah, pay attention, keep up with us.
He's saying this now, but he's not getting kicked.
Next up, we have May 6th. I, so I will be unavailable for that day.
There's something in state law that concerns me, but I'll tell you that.
So 25th. I can do the, yeah, I can do the 25th. The following weekend is Memorial Weekend, so.
So Joe on the 25th?
I can do the 25th again, or?
Did anybody volunteer for the 6th? I apologize.
No.
Okay.
I can do the 6th.
Kim on the 6th, so we need one more on each day?
Just put me on one, I don't care at this point.
Don't everybody jump in your.
You know what, you know what?
I'll do the, I'll do the 25th.
Me, you and me again? Okay, I'll tell you what, I'll go to the 6th. I think I can do that one.
So Kim and Joe.
Because I like Kim breakfast, and she brings coffee and eggs, bagels, right? And I got, just trying to mix it up a little. I got Bob and Andy.
And so Bob and Andy on the 25th for May?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jump in anytime, Jamie.
Now, Bob, Bob has volun, Bob previously volunteered for the June 3rd. Do you still want to be on that day, Bob?
Sure.
Okay.
All I see is Jamie's name.
You want to sign Jamie up for something?
Jamie's going to take the rap. He'll do most times in June.
So, you know what, we'll put Bob and Jamie for the 3rd, and if he ever finds his voice, if he's not here, he can come back and let us know. Austin, let him know.
That's fine.
And then on the 22nd, I will not be around. So I can maybe take the 3rd if Jamie can't, and then the 22nd is going to have to be someone else.
Yeah, I'm unavailable the 22nd.
I'll do it.
About Jamie and Andy.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right.
Perfect. Perfect.
I think we're finally vet, you could let him know which days we pick from him. I'm sure he'll be thrilled.
And get him on his calendar, make sure he puts it in his file.
I, I, I'll send calendar invites.
And just let him know, I, I could be available on the third if he can't.
Okay.
Okay, so, alright, so um, moving on, that's all we have with that, right? Moving on, we have discussion and consideration of development of finance initiative, DFI quotes for service. Row hits.
And we talked about this very extensively last night, um, so I think y'all came to a conclusion last night. Row didn't wanted to present it to you tonight, estimated at twelve thousand dollars for DFI.
Um, yeah, so, I mean, obviously I put this item on the agenda before the conversation that was had last night. Uh, it seemed to me that there was a consensus that instead of doing a round of stakeholder engagement at all, that we would instead just move forward with the creation of a strategic plan with some minor uh modifications just on the staff's side. But um, in case you wanted to consider it, um, I did ask DFI for a quote on the scope of engaging all thirteen property owners and uh, you know, putting those, you know, having those conversations and then putting it together for us and then giving us a recommendation on how the uh scenarios would be improved based on their conversations with all of the property owners. Um, I'm going to screen share it now, um, and.
I'll need a copy of that.
Yes, I, I printed uh, they're on the printer, so I'll, I'll also get them. Um, once I scroll to here, which is, I think, um, yeah, so I'm gonna keep it there and then I'm gonna get the copies off the printer.
The consensus was y'all didn't, y'all didn't want DFI to do this.
Well, I think, yeah, talking yesterday, that it was very clear that we shouldn't be spending village funding. I think that's where, I think Planning Board was on board with that too, they didn't see the reason for it. And I think with Jamie's recommendations, we were going down the path of, you know, maybe just creating what we feel, you know, maybe this zoning change, whatever it is, and if the individuals or landowners come to us and that fits in, then, you know, yeah, it's a lot of work, but I think it's better than the alternative, which John Jones was concerned about, and he and I talking, where developer, landowner comes to us and said, hey, can you create something for us? And we're, it's ba, it's backwards.
Instead of rehashing the wheel that we did last night, are we all in, in agreement that we don't want DFI to do this?
At this time. What I'd suggest after Jamie's comments, you said, you kind of alluded to the fact that this group may be able to help, that we've hired for planner, could be able to help us in some way.
Right, right, since we already have a contract with a planner from the firm and Focus, um, it's as opposed to hiring an individual, um, the, the CEO of the company was very interested in our project and offered to put some of the company's resources within the cost of our current contract towards this project.
Okay, so that'd be part, so there's no extra cost to the.
Right.
That's where we're focused on right now.
A freebie.
Right, um, because, you know, this, you know.
What do you think it's in it for him that he's doing that?
Um.
Goodwill?
Perhaps, I, you know, back when, you know, we had just gone to the Main Street Conference and we had people basically throwing themselves to volunteer for the planning of this project. It's just very interesting and in twenty, you know, twenty twenty, uh, you don't really have downtown districts being planned from a start, so it's a very interesting project for any planner. Um, that's really where it comes from, you know how many people have volunteered for us so far, um.
Just having that under their belt that they are involved in a project such as this, which.
Yeah.
It, and I can see that because in any kind of project that falls into my field, that's something that's out of the ordinary, I'm always very eager to be involved because it's a learning process and it gives me an opportunity to, to pick up.
Yeah.
Some more experience and knowledge in my field, so I can understand that from their perspective.
But we're, we're all on the same page, I think, that we don't wanna use any more taxpayer dollars to figure out who holds who hand or where we take it from here. But I would strongly say if that's something that they would like to kind of maybe help us with or guide us with, or for that matter, if they wanna present to us in their work session or something like that, that what they see or maybe give us ideas, instead of having a meeting with um, the Planning Board where we're all kicking around, we weren't for a minute, there were a little bit more in a minute, we were going around in circles, uh, you know, maybe they have some ideas that we're just not thinking of that are able to kind of guide us down this path, but it, it, right now, it's very clear and I appreciate DFI giving the proposal to us, but to even review it at this point doesn't seem like it's something that we need to spend any time on.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, that sounds fair. I think the direction is really good then. Um, overall, then the direction is to not uh engage DFI with this contract and um to move.
At this time, right.
Yes, at this time.
And I would say to you, is, I, I would say if you could reach out to this and Focus and say, hey, what are we missing here that, you know, I mean, give them our stance and say, hey, you know, the, the village does not wanna spend thousands of dollars on this to figure out what's the best use of thing, but we do, we are interested in bringing these landowners and, and creating this from scratch. What do you recommend? And then, and you know, they don't have to meet with us, I mean, you come back with recommendations and we, we just kind of go from there. But I think still that Jamie had some great ideas, and we all had great ideas of where we lead this, but uh, as far as entertaining a contract at this point, I don't think we're there yet. Would you agree, council members? I see a shake ahead of Kim, yes?
Oh, I, yeah, I'm with her, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's what we talked about last night, I think Planning Board's on, on, you know, on board with that. I, I generate what Jamie said last night, I think we need to work on, you know, what's gonna be allowable so that, you know, when these landowners come to us, uh, to see it's actually gonna, you know, work, but there. And Row, I would suggest reaching out and kind of letting the landowners know where we are, um, and kind of, you know, where we are at, at this junction and um, they want people to take in and if they don't, then, you know, we're, we're gonna continue moving forward with these looking at the ordinance, doing more of that, figuring out.
There was a concern, the ordinance was a lot of work and stuff like that, but yes, it is. It is gonna be a lot of work, but it's just something that can be something we, we move towards and.
But it is also why I have, um, asked for an assistant now and that's gonna be his basically major task.
Okay.
Coming up.
It's gonna have to be done at some point anyway, so we might as well get started drafting it and, and then we'll be able to tweak it as, as we go or get more information.
Okay.
We're, we're not, I, I don't believe in this whole thing that we're creating the wheel. So we can get, we can use some other resources to put this together, but we, you know, as I listened to all this last night, council has to take the lead on this and, and drive it. Is it tough? It may be a tough, tough haul, but I think it's just, it's right for us to do. That's just my opinion.
Think we, we all agree with that.
Yeah, I, I just have a quick question to Row it. Really, I, you know, I've been talking to John Jones over, you know, past couple of months and the question, what, when I knew that where John's direction was mentally and that was, he was wanting to know where, where does the planning board go from here? Now, it was of my understanding of the work that had already been done by these different groups, that, you know, when you would show the layout of the Heritage District, you were showing, you know, these different colors and where everything was going to be. So I would thought the next step was the Planning Board was gonna work on zoning and coming up with zoning, which would, you know, entail, this is the way it's laid out. I know before DFI got involved, but it was laid out, this is residential on this side, this is commercial on that side. What changed? In other words, I, I thought it was going smooth as it was going into zoning, but what, what changed?
Well, the reason why we kind of uh put a, a little bit of a break is that the DFI report came out with those feasibility numbers a little low. So we had to kind of take a pause and assess whether, you know, we were gonna do something about that. Are we going to hire someone or do it ourselves, figure out how to, you know, figure out a new scenario that would increase those numbers? But it looks like the consensus and, and from what Melinda said last night, we really do have enough information, after thinking about it, to move forward with uh creating this um zoning district today, given the information that we got from the DFI report and recommendations on how to increase those numbers. We don't actually need to do another round of analysis if we can just say, alright, DFI said this is what is, it could be improved, let's figure out how to improve, you know, this and that with that, without, you know, while still being in the confines of the land use plan and um, we can just, we can move forward with the zoning district at this time. So there, we just had to have a discussion about it and now that that discussion has been had, we are going to be moving forward with the zoning district, that seems like the consensus right now.
Good, okay, cause I thought the pivotal point in the meeting was when Jamie was sharing his ideas and then Melinda jumped in, just like you just said, and said, we already have enough information. It was like, yeah, okay, let's move on, you know? So, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Alright, that said, I think we can uh move forward to our next item?
Is that correct?
Yes, I would not request.
So next up, we have on number seven, discussion of adding an additional council seat. I think this was, this was brought up years ago when we initially thought about adding, um, I think we always talked about just because of uh, um, who's coming in and who's going out and stuff and, and uh thing, I think it, in my view, makes sense to add a sixth council member and we have to do this now to get it on the.
If, if you're gonna do it by referendum.
By referendum. So do we have to decide that first referendum or can we just say, yeah, we're gonna add one?
You can make a charter change without a referendum, but if, so, I mean, yes, you couldn't do it without.
We just may get pushback from the community.
Yeah, to oppose it, in which case would have to go to a referendum.
Okay.
Which, which we have enough time to then get it on the ballot, right?
Yeah, we should, I think the last time we had to submit it was like May or June, so yeah, we still have time.
I think it's ninety days, Brian.
I mean, so, you know, I, I brought this up at our last work session, I wanted to put it on the uh, you know, the regular agenda, the people might think we're trying to split something, but I am. Um, when, when we added the fifth council seat, it was absolutely the intention to add a sixth council seat in the twenty-three election. Um, so I, I, I think that, you know, you're gonna have an odd number with six council or the mayor, but I think that's what, what was intended when we added a fifth council seat. Uh, we just didn't wanna do it all in one year, and that's the reason that it's being brought up now. I would absolutely like to try to do it by just changing the charter, cause I'm hoping that people understand that it is adding an additional council seat, trying to get additional representation for the community. Um, I would like to try to just do the charter change and not do it by referendum unless we have to, because in that way, it's just one, one less, we just kind of, it's, it's done, we know it's gonna happen. Um, that's kind of where I stand with it.
I agree with Kim. I feel like that we don't need to go to referendum unless we're forced to. I think this is a simple thing that just adding an extra representative in the community is a good thing. It uh, I think we just go forward with it.
So the next steps would be a resolution of intent, so that would be on the, I mean, we could put it on the next meeting or the April meeting and then after the resolution of, of intent is approved, we would go with the ordinance to.
Get, have a public hearing.
Yeah, at the, at the ordinance adoption.
So.
Can we, can we put it on, can we put, I know we tried to put these things on work, the work session, but since we only have one April meeting, can we buy him to put it on there so we can just kind of move this along? Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I have a problem with it.
I have no problem.
You said resolution of intent.
Correct.
And we're putting it on what?
The work session?
The March twenty-fifth work session?
Can we?
We can.
Is that too soon?
No, we can do that.
I'm just thinking because we only have one meeting in April.
Yeah.
And just trying to, trying to move it along, cause we have to have a public hearing and advertise for it, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah, again, my argument of having five is that you can have, you know, the beautiful thing about the village for years, having four councilmen and a mayor, is every two years, the mayor ends up running with two different council and, and the pendulum can swing. So if the community gets it wrong for whatever reason, that, that can be changed in just two years. Um, elections have consequences and, you know, it's, it's good that we'd be able to have ability to, to make that change and the timing of when council are going, will be running for office, I think, is important. And I think either way, the, the mayor is still gonna run every two years. It just may be instead of with two people, it'll be with three people in the end, if this goes through, so.
Yeah.
And, so.
So we'll, unless there's objections from other council members, we'll get it prepared for the work session.
Okay.
Bob, you okay with that?
I'm good with it. I agree.
Okay, Jamie said yes, cause he's not on here.
Yeah, okay, alright, um, hearing that, we'll move on to the next one, uh, final one on new businesses, uh, re, sanitary sewer project and Village Hall, what are we doing here? What did I say, was re?
Consider removing sanitary.
Consider removing sanitary sewer project from the Village Hall, RFP.
So as we have been exploring this drainage issue that we've had with the cross pipe at um, the location, our engineer has come in and recommended that we actually take the sanitary sewer project out of our current bid and bid that part separately for various reasons. Um, number one, he thinks that it's gonna reduce the um, need for future DEQ inspections to come out and require um permits for that and also retention ponds, but number two, he thinks that there may be a reduction in the total cost of the project. By doing so, um, Councilmember Mortman and I went out Monday and um, met with him on site and looked at a few different things and I don't know if you have any, any two cents to provide, but.
Yeah, I mean, so his, his concern is because we've poked at DOT um, over the drainage issue and uh, there's been some noise made, so DEQ's ears might be perked up and he's, he's very concerned about DEQ coming out there and um, saying that we're, that the two projects combined and saying that we're over our one acre disturbed zone. Um, the Village Hall site is point nine acres, okay, that's uh disturbed without the sewer line. So to make it clear that these are two separate projects, this would mean there would be two separate contractors involved and they would be done at two separate times, so they're clearly marked as two separate projects. So DEQ cannot link the two together and say that we're over our disturbed limit and that way we can avoid cutting down a hundred-year-old oak tree to put in our retention pond.
And we're also going ahead and kind of fixing some of the drainage issues at that time, so we're.
So how does that affect the existing RFP?
What would, what we'll do is an addendum to remove that portion of the project and what I'm trying to do as we speak now, um, I've already redone a project manual specifically for the, for the sanitary sewer. Uh, we will reissue another bid for that project and I'm trying to make them coincide so the end date is the exact same as Village Hall. Um, because a lot of the vendors that will be bidding on them have already put together their bids anyways, they already had the information handy, um, and they're just gonna turn around and submit, hopefully. If we don't get three submittals, then we'll have to, to go out for bid again, um, but it's, it, most of the work has been done.
So legally, we can pull that off of.
Yeah, you can pull it up.
Pull that up, even though it's our, our.
You can award it part and full.
Okay, okay.
And we have the money to do the, to go ahead and do the sewer project, which we could then have it re, I mean, it would be restabilized before we break ground on Village Hall, so.
So it's not part of the loan?
We don't, it, we don't have to make it part of the loan, cause we'll use some of the cash that we've got in the bank.
Well, I'm just wondering if the Qs will come and tie in if it's together.
They can't, it, it doesn't matter where the money's coming from, it's two separate projects, two separate, uh, complete separate projects with different contractors, it's a complete different thing. It encompasses two actual, two different properties, but it's, and the other thing is that uh, that we can argue in that respect is that the sewer line that we are tapping will also then go to the next commercial building in the Heritage District to tie into the sewer. So it's, so we should just really trying to make a huge separation between two projects to keep DEQ out of our business.
Okay. Bob, Kim, do you have any other questions on that? Alright, we need a motion to. Alright, we need a motion to, we need a motion for this, right?
Yes.
Alright. Joe, you say it, Mel's gonna move you.
What am I saying?
I think you have it written down.
Well, I just said, we have a motion to remove this sanitary sewer project from the current RFP for Village Hall and create a separate RFP for the drainage, for the sanitary sewer. I need a motion for that. That is the motion. And further discussion, okay, further discussion?
Aye.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
You're way ahead of me, okay.
I'm trying to move along.
I know, I know. Okay, so agenda items.
Do we have any other topics?
What? Open topics? Do we have any open topics? I don't at this time either, although there's always something to talk about. Next up then, we go to agenda items. So first up, we have review of action items and ongoing action item list.
Okay, so Christina will execute the two agreements with S. Preston Douglas and Parker Poe. I will send out coffee with council invites. Her hit will get recommendations from and focus on Heritage District. Christina will get a resolution of intent for the charter to change for additional council seat on the March 25th work session. I will get with Parag Patel on his appointment and see if he still wants to serve on the Board of Adjustment. Derek, I'm guessing this is Derek will inform the PRG about Marvin Day preparations. And what was, I don't know who was spearheading the Greenway flooding, is that Andy or...
Derek, we'll direct Derek.
Yeah, I'll be having a direct discussion with Derek on my findings. He, we talked briefly today and I've gotta give him the details.
Okay, are you everything ready Christina? That's her little talk, if I noticed.
Nope, that's it.
Okay, and you have to be counsel?
Yeah, I'm ready. Ready?
Oh, boy.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Rohit, where are we with the tree planting list?
So I got a little bit of an update on that one.
Sweet.
So it looks like Bill is finally officially retiring and county is going to be hiring a new urban forester. And so they're in the process of that. And if, you know, once they do get someone, we don't have to, you know, rub them about, you know, potentially finding someone else. We'll get that started right back when they have someone new.
Okay. What about dwelling ordinance revision?
Again, that's just gonna be wrapped up in the code reorganization, but an update on that is that Tom is starting to work on the kind of review of the code reorganization, which happened last year. And he's about more than halfway done with it. And that's incorporating all this minor revisions like that and others are gonna be part of the project in about two weeks from now, maybe one week or two weeks from now. The overall project, of course, is gonna be presented to planning board and council over the course of a few months.
Okay. You updated us about the roundabout lighting last night. Village Center renderings, I would just put that on hold, because again, I think if we're in the process of, you know, we're gonna let the landowners do what they, you know, want to do after we get the ordinance taken care of. So I would just put that on hold.
Right, that's kind of on the agenda for Tom and I to do in about four weeks from now or to start, based on the tweaks that we make to the scenarios and based on the input that we receive from the committees and the property owners.
I don't even know why, like, you would waste your time on that.
What, to do renderings or?
Yeah.
Well, if we're...
We're bringing the village resources to get people like ideas of working to do it in their properties. Is that, is that not what we decided that we were not gonna do?
Um, that's, I guess that's complicated, because you also want to be able to inform the public about what our final decisions on the zoning district would or could look like.
I don't think we need to worry about that until we zoned it or we have ideas from landowners. Because what a landowner comes back to us could look completely different than what we put out there.
Okay, well, I'll just put that on hold then.
Alright, streetlights, I saw that email. It's all encroachment. Christina, I saw your response about the developer put them in, they did power that like recently, so... I mean, I don't know. I mean, did we not have, were we not talking about lighting up certain like throughways? And we just decided that it's gonna be way too expensive and I'm wrong?
Probably so. I mean, it's gonna be encroachments.
I'm probably so wrong?
No, 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 no. We probably did have that discussion, because it's gonna involve encroachments, budgeting for the actual utilities, the plans, that sort of thing. So we probably did have that discussion, but we'll find out.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
On roundabouts, just as I'm looking down the list, did the state representatives give us any time frame of when they would be getting back to us?
No, and I followed up with one of them today and I haven't heard anything back.
Okay.
Oh, where's our upcoming projects newsletter, Austin?
I'm waiting on one last bit to go in and it's getting sent out Friday.
Sweet. Yay, awesome. Okay. Mark donations, it says me and Derek were supposed to brief the PRG about discussing the donations. I don't remember what that was about. Can you anybody help me with that? Can we talk about donations for the park?
It's sponsorships, right?
That's sponsorship for the equipment, isn't it? Didn't we, didn't you guys talk about it at PRG meeting?
Sponsorships is different than just a donation. Like, we were talking about having like a donation sign, like...
Or do bricks. I know, they talked about donating and the family could get a brick. These bricks could be installed where at the beginning of the pass and they can continue down the pass. Anyone, anytime, I just was on the campus of my daughter's and you're walking on up to the bell tower, it's full of bricks and family names and I'm sure they all paid a certain amount of money to put their little brick there. It's just a way to donate to, it's a great idea to, you know...
No, I agree. Austin, can you put that in PRG and...
Yeah, eventually I will.
I couldn't hear, I couldn't make that out.
Hey, put your charger back. Look, I'm trying to get out of here.
I couldn't hear what you said, Kim, I apologize.
That's okay, Austin. Can you, can you put this back up? Can you put this on the PRG? Addrida and have Derek get up with me so we can get on the same page with you.
Sponsorships or donations?
Donations. Please, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we can get rid of RFP for signpost?
Check that out.
Yep.
Um, we're gonna, welcome to Marvin sign, we're gonna put that on hold until we get more money?
Correct.
Uh, you can get rid of the Avinson zoning request, you can complete that. We've investigated bar crock multiple occupancy issues, you can get rid of that. Christina, you assess the 32-hour employee thing?
Correct.
Okay.
No left turn.
Oh, Bill, donations are tax deductible, we can complete that, because Chapin said it's based on who your tax advisor is.
Yes.
I love that answer.
And also, the purpose of the donations are given for different reasons and we just don't give tax advice.
Yeah, okay.
Most of them are gonna try to write it up.
Marvin Day, I would say we can complete that, because we're gonna hand that off to the PRG.
I've done the traffic stop notice.
Uh, we've done the special meetings for, or special notices for the joint meetings, you can complete that. Roadway median ordinance, Rohit? Planning board's got that?
Yeah, that's going on planning board next week.
Sweet, okay.
Uh, that's still, that's still gonna be in progress.
Someone submitted it, not, not here.
You can complete the quote for DFI. What's the spot? Oh, that's there, okay. And then you can complete the two-point board out. We're not completing.
I still have to get the bond for church communications out. That's progress. We nailed those postcards out. I mailed those postcards out, but we still need to get a piece out like this week.
That's fine. Good job, y'all.
Yeah, I'm getting a lot.
Oh, wait, my comments go really long. I'm gonna go first on comments, not their comments. They're only about 30 minutes long, so sit back, have a sip of something. So first off, thank you guys all for being, I know we're, a lot of meetings this week, so staff, thank you for that and all the work you've done, quite frankly, on the getting the budget ready and all the things that you guys have done. But first off, I wanted to just point out, Nancy sent us to all the council, to all of us, just basically thanking us for the kindness we've shown. Thank you very much for all the wonderful gifts and really appreciate it. So she sent a little card to me. I thought I'd read that for you guys. Wanted to, I know Jamie's not on, but wanted to thank Andy and Jamie again for work on the Greenway. Again, that's, it just shows, you know, we're getting involved, we're trying to do everything we can to save taxpayer dollars when we can and things are obvious for us. So I hope that moves forward in a positive way. Again, finance, Jamie, the work she's done, you guys that have been, I know you've been slammed, so I apologize. I know a lot of phone calls and stuff. Rohit, the other day for the planning board meeting at the Union County, I can't say enough about that, because getting the feedback from individuals separately calling me and saying they were really thankful that we're keeping Marvin Marvin, if you will. And I want to, I just thought of something as we were going through the total projects. Nothing happens quick, right? So we're talking about these village renderings. You know, I would bet a college, I know we had this done before by a college graduate and they did it as their, a big project and it was part of the land use plan. But I bet you we could search out a college, that university could take this project, something like this on, you present them all the things that we have, the parameters, and say, you know, is this something that you'd be interested in doing? And then taking it, especially for planning, I mean, here's an opportunity to plan a downtown and maybe they come up with ideas or at least renderings of what this could be. So just food for thought down the road as we're thinking about what we do that. But my final point, I want to point out tomorrow, our federal government is going to pretty much, who now is controlled with one party, is pretty much going to pass a bill tomorrow of 1.9 trillion dollars. It's probably the most progressive piece of legislation that has ever been passed, I would argue. And I think we passed a resolution on this, that the bill should be about targeted relief. It is not, and I am appalled at what is happening. And I just, you know, want to make it clear that I am absolutely against what I am seeing going on. Everything from defunding the police to the border and what's happening. But tomorrow, it looks like it's gonna pass and it is 1.9 trillion dollars. We did pass a resolution, I think it was months ago, saying that COVID relief stuff should just be focused on COVID relief.
Now you have 2020, I believe.
Yeah, but now that one party has the power, they're not even hearing the other side at this point. They're just passing stuff, bringing things out. So it's appalling. I'm disgusted with what I'm seeing. And I appreciate us trying to be fiscally responsible for the taxpayers. And that's all I would say, and I'll pass it over to Andy if you want to say anything. I know Jamie would have had something to say about that, so...
I'll stay away from the politics, but I...
You're in politics.
Yeah. Well, I have seen some very nice remarks on Rohit's behalf on how he handled the county planning board. So again, thank you for all your hard work on that and I know all the residents really do appreciate that. And of course, everybody on staff has been working extremely hard. I think I see staff more than I do my own family here recently. So it's, I wanna see you. Yeah, it's, so just wanted to say thanks for all of the hard work and the officers too. I noticed a sharp increase in traffic stops, which is great. That means you guys are slowing down out there. Seen a lot of presence. I know you guys were busy the other day at two wrecks within a quarter of a mile of each other. So that's about it for me.
Alright, thank you, Andy. Bob?
Actually, I have nothing to say, because I totally agree with everything you folks have said, so I won't repeat it. So, thank you. I appreciate what you've said and, you know, I agree.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, I think that's about it, isn't it? You have something to say?
No, I really do appreciate all of staff's work. I know this week's kind of been a crazy week, but everybody's doing a great job. I mean, it's just keeping up, I really appreciate it. Including all those great traffic cops, Mike and Mason, gotta get them, gotta slow down, get them, get them.
Hey, Mason, just so you know, ETA the 23rd, the 23rd, okay? Thank you.
ETA.
What?
I don't know, that must be code or something.
It is.
Alright, anyway, so with that, thank you all for getting this completed word, 8:42.
I know, wrap it up.
Need a motion to, I wanna see those hand claps. Motion to adjourn.
At 8:42.
At 8:42.
So moved.
All's in favor. Alright, thanks, guys.
Alright, goodnight, everybody. See you tomorrow.